Good morning, everyone. It is Tuesday, January twenty first, twenty first, two thousand and twenty five. What a tongue tester that one is. Probably not for most, but it is for me. Anyway, I'm going to call our meeting to get to order. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Netherland, would you lead us in the pledge?
I would be absolutely honored.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on to item number three, roll call.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Pat Tarzwell.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Sharon Truss.
I'm here. Move on to item number four, correspondence and organizational business. Do we have any correspondence?
We do. The Capital Land Trust sent in the two thousand and twenty four report regarding Decker Creek wetlands. Timberland Regional Library sent in resolutions and tax levy worksheets for two thousand and twenty five. United States Fish and Wildlife Service sent in the following: Proposal to update the Grizzly Bear Endangered Species Act listing and management and proposal to list Suckley's Cuckoo Bumblebee as endangered. Advisory board applications were received from the following: Ginger Kenyan for the Parks and Trails Advisory Board and M. Dujon Johnson for the Housing Authority of Mason County. Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board sent in the following: Liquor License Renewal Application for Casey's Bar and Grill, Happy CJ, Fraternal Order of the Eagles, Somay, Malachi Core, The Fjord, Olympia Local Foods, Home Meat Service, and Mason County Senior Activities, and cannabis license renewal applications for Casey Days, Diamond Ace, and Damn Good Bud.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand. What was that last one?
Oh, the names make me big. All right, thank you very much. Do we have any organizational business that we need to attend to? I don't believe so. All right, this is the time. Let's move on to item number five. This is the time we set aside for our citizens to have the opportunity to talk to us, which is really cool. We have a fifteen minute total time, three minutes. We ask that you not go over three minutes. We'll start in the room here. And if anybody in the room would like to address the commission, please raise your hand. All right. I don't see anyone in here that would like to raise their hand. Anyone in Zoom land? Tamara.
Good morning, everyone. Happy New Year. Tamara Ingwalson with New Horizon Communities. And part of that is the Shelton Veterans Village. And I just wanted to let our commissioners know that we are sending out invitations via email for Colleen to meet with you over coffee. And so I sent those out on the sixth and hope that we can make connections with all three of you.
And we just had coffee. Thank you for organizing that. It was a great discussion.
You are most welcome.
Madam Chair, may I have a second?
Uh huh.
I know you sent me one, and I know I planned to attend. But I didn't see it on my phone. What was the date on that? Do you know? Send me another invite, please, for some reason. If it's not on my phone, it don't exist.
I can send another one because we didn't have a date set yet. It was an invitation to set the date.
Oh, that's why, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tamara. No worries. All right. Anyone else in the Zoom room? All right, seeing none. Let's move on to item number six, the adoption of the agenda.
Madam Chair, I move for adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to... Wow. I need to go back to Saturday, I think.
You got this, don't you?
We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item number seven, the adoption of minutes.
Madam Chair, I move for adoption, approval of the minutes for September fifth, two thousand and twenty four, delegation meeting minutes of December second, December ninth, December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty four, and January sixth, January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five briefing minutes, December second, two thousand and twenty four special meeting minutes, and December third, two thousand and twenty four regular meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of September fifth, two thousand and twenty four delegation meeting minutes, December second, December ninth, December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty four, and January sixth, and January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five briefing minutes, December second, two thousand and twenty four special meeting minutes, and December third, two thousand and twenty four regular meeting minutes. Any discussion? All right, a call for the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, we're going to move on to item number eight. This is approval of our action agenda. Commissioners or citizens can pull something from the action agenda. We will have each commissioner read some of the action agenda, and then we will discuss or separate or vote. Commissioner Netherland, could you read items eight point one through eight point six? Commissioner Tarzwell, eight point seven through eight point eleven? And then I will read eight twelve through eight fifteen.
Madam Chair, item number eight point one reads approval of warrants and treasures, electronic remittance claims, clearing funds, warrants number eight one zero nine nine eight four through eight one one zero three zero seven. The amount, one million, seven hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred, one dollars, ninety-two cents. Direct deposit fund, warrants number one one two seven eight seven through one one three one eight seven. The amount, one million, eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars, fifty-five cents. Salary clearing fund, warrants number seven zero zero eight six one six through seven zero zero eight six five three. The amount, one million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars, sixty-five cents. The treasure's electronic remittance, three million, five hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-four cents. Item number eight point two reads approval to extend the warranty with Linev Systems U.S. Incorporated for the body scanning machine at the jail for the estimated amount of fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Item number eight point three, approval for Corrections Technology Group, CTG, to upgrade and repair lots for the jail for the estimated amount of sixty-six thousand, five hundred and four dollars. Item number eight point four, approval to upgrade the jail's security video storage archive to store sixty days of video for an estimated cost of twenty thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars through the CTG to be compliant with Washington State retention rules. Item number eight point five, approval of the two thousand and twenty five memorandum of agreement, MOA, Appendix A between Washington State University, WSU Extension, and Mason County in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. Item number eight point six, approval of the resolution setting the hearing date with the hearings examiner for Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty five, at one P.M. via Zoom to consider public comments on road vacation number four two one.
Item eight point seven, approval for Public Works to procure a paint striping truck from Mark Wright Lines Equipment Co., Inc. off the buy board contract for an estimated amount of four hundred and ten thousand dollars, six hundred and... Four hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars. An approval for the county engineer to sign the purchase agreement. Eight point eight, approval of the resolution setting the chief deputy prosecuting attorney's position salary at eighty-five percent of that set for the Superior Court Judge by the Washington Citizens Commission on Salaries for Elected Officials. Eight point nine, approval of a one-time use of two hundred thousand dollars of treatment sales tax, TST, funding from the available balance of more than two million. An approval for the Public Health and Human Service Director to sign the contract with United We Care for implementation of a mental health support and professional intervention pilot program. Eight point ten, approval of the resolution setting a hearing date with the hearing examiner for Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty five, at one P.M. via Zoom to consider public comment on road vacation number four twenty-three. And eight point one one, approval of the resolution for County Road Projects, CRP, two thousand and sixty Matlock Brady Road Safety Improvement Project, CRP two thousand and sixty-one Coqualem Road Improvement Project, CRP two thousand and sixty-two Blevins Road Evergreen Estates Water Extension Project, and CRP two thousand and sixty-three for the Maples Road Gravel Road Conversion Project. Approval for the county engineer to request for qualifications, RFQ, as needed for consultant services for the projects and to enter into contracts and approval for the county engineer and/or the chair to sign all pertinent documents.
Item eight point twelve, approval for Public Works to purchase bridge structures for the Portman Danny Walker and Crisman Bridge maintenance projects located in Beville Loop Road through the Washington State contract with the Department of Enterprise Services. Item eight point thirteen, approval of the resolution, amending resolution number two thousand and twenty-one dash zero six zero, designating the risk manager to receive claims for damages upon Mason County. Item eight point fourteen, approval of the resolution, amending resolution number twenty-seven dash nineteen, Mason County Code Chapter two point four six for Mason County, County's Americans with Disabilities Act, designating the risk manager as the ADA coordinator. And item eight point fifteen, approval of the resolution, amending resolution number two thousand and twenty-two dash zero zero nine, Washington County's Risk Pool Member County Appointments and Designations. All right, having read through all the action agenda, commissioners, do you have any items that you would like to have removed for separate discussion or vote?
None at this time.
All right. And anyone in the public, like anything removed for separate discussion or vote? No one in the room? Anyone in Zoom room? All right. Any discussions or possible motions?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to give a couple of thank yous. Watch, I'll go ahead and make a motion first, and then you can offer that, okay?
That works.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the action agenda as presented, items eight point one all the way through eight point one five.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the action agenda items eight point one through eight point one five. Discussion.
Yes, I just want to give a special thank you, first of all, WSU. Our partnerships with you have been very beneficial over and over again in many different ways. And I want to remind the public as we work with you, it's been everything from food handling to even economic development during the downtimes of COVID. And just didn't want to go through with people just thinking it's just an automatic thing we do here. I honestly believe we get more than we pay. Just wanted you to know that. I want to give a shout out to our staff over at Public Works. I sure appreciate the heck out of you guys. This lining truck is a big step in us taking responsibility and taking the role of taking care of ourselves and protecting ourselves in the future to make sure that things like this happen. This last year won't happen again. And I want to point out that the staff at the Public Works is always very frugal with those dollars and what they spend on the equipment. And they go out and they look for the best buys. Unlike times in the past, I always feel like we definitely get a big bang for the buck. Our staff is not afraid to look for used stuff and not afraid to even come to us with things for redundancy, which has proven to be very cost effective and saved us a lot of money over the years when we have the equipment right now instead of having to go out and trying to find it, especially now that we're going to have a little redundancy with some bridges and he'll be bringing back some other things in the future. When you're stuck on the other side of the road and we have our staff show up there with it, just know that it's because of things like this that makes a difference. And let's see. I want to talk about our chief deputy prosecuting attorney and his salary increase. I know we did just increase his salary, but with some different adjustments. I want to point out that ours is different than almost every other county. Our chief deputy prosecuting attorney handles the criminal and the civil and the property and government. Whatever it takes, he's in the top of all that. And he has to be well-versed in each one of those things because in the county, you'd be shocked at all the things we have to deal with on a daily basis. So I wanted to say that as a justification for it, and that I'm proud to be supportive of it. That's all I got.
No comment at this time.
All right. I too want to thank WSU for the work that they've done. You really help guide our kids, our youth. And I appreciate the time and effort that you and your staff put into that. It's not just us, it's Grace Harbor, too. So you're spread all over the place. So I appreciate you. And I kind of like our Public Works department. They do an okay job. No, you guys are awesome. All right, anything further? All right, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, great. Let's move on to item number nine, other business. Do we have any department heads or elected officials that would like to say anything?
They have to go up all over the place.
I'm going to go for Dan first, sorry, Marc.
That's okay. Before Dan speaks, you know, your predecessor, many years ago, when I first became a commissioner, every single meeting, he would get up and he would speak. He'd take ten, fifteen minutes every single meeting to tell us everything that's going on. And we expect that of you now that we've just been...
Yeah, we'll chat after. All right, good morning, Commissioner. Thank you for the kind words and the approval of the MOA. It just signifies our partnership again and again. It's a wonderful opportunity. I do have another opportunity for you. We are hiring a four-H coordinator. We are down a four-H coordinator right now. And we had it posted for about a month, and we had a failed search. So I'd just like to get the word out about our open four-H coordinator position. It's a full-time position with benefits here in Mason County, a great place to work. But we're just looking to get the word out about that position. So if you have any interest, if you know anyone looking to work a position like that, working with people, working with kids, working with the community, let me know. I'm happy to chat with anybody.
Requirements?
Requirements are we prefer a bachelor's degree, but not required. Job experiences can really go a long way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And is that posted on our website?
Posted on WSU's website. I'm wondering if we could chat and get it linked on ours. I wonder how that would all work.
Yeah, it should be on our new web, but I will check that.
Yeah, we can check.
Okay.
Absolutely. It's also on our WSU's Mason County's Extension website that can link to everything else. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
Commissioner, I'd like to just give you a heads up here that I received an email from P D number three last week reminding me of an email they had sent me the week before. They are getting ready to apply for the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Program. So this is a federal grant that allows us to push broadband out into rural areas. It's a huge program, billions of dollars, something that we have supported both of them and HCC through grant funds to actually pull together these applications because the applications are pretty intensive. I'd like to have the county provide them a letter of support, and they need that letter of support this week. So I just wanted to give the commission the heads up that I was going to be signing that letter of support. And if you have any concerns, give it an opportunity to tell me.
Madam Chair, I don't think we have to do anything in the form of a motion on this. I have no objection with our administrator signing it on our behalf.
That's good.
Yeah. Yeah, great program. And hopefully, knock on wood, we'll have some success there and be able to push broadband out into areas that are having trouble with their old copper phone lines, right? I mean, that would be a perfect solution for some of that, so.
And just share with the public, Pat, that usually it would take an actual motion if the commission were to sign on its behalf, where it's maybe not necessary. If we don't have an objection with staff doing it. But for us to sign, put our name on it, it would have to come before us here. That's all.
And those are normally briefed on Mondays. And then I place them on your regular agenda, and you guys would approve those letters within your regular agenda here, so.
Thank you. Thank you. I know, man, it's such an important thing to get access out there. I mean, it was proven during the COVID, gosh, felt like years, but that our youth did not have access. And we've got to make sure that that's a priority. So I appreciate you signing the letter and doing that for us.
Absolutely. Madam Chair, I have a question. Do you have a guess at what kind of timeline they're talking about for this thing to kick in? Or is this a, you know, ten years down the road type of project?
It is. I believe that the application process is open now. And by the award would be coming in two thousand and twenty-five for the work to actually be completed in twenty-six and beyond. I can get other timelines for you, but it's...
Just a rough guess.
It's really in the... The feds have really been pushing this program out to let people know that it's coming. We've done a number of studies on it. And WSU Extension helped us identifying our areas that didn't have good access to high-speed internet. Now that that's been done and the providers are actually coming in to say, hey, this is what it would cost me to actually extend the services that I have here out to these rural areas, that will now go to the feds. And once they award those dollars, it usually can happen fairly quickly. But hopefully, I'm thinking construction in twenty-six.
Because past practices, anything through our ARPA funds and stuff, we found that after we got the funds out there, they were usually completed within two years.
I noticed in the map that you had provided us a lot of that's going to be going out into my district. They desperately need it.
Absolutely. I was approached last week by Hood Communications as well to provide a letter of support on behalf of the BAT, the Broadband Action Team of Mason County. That was the work that we created to pull providers and stakeholders together the past few years to look at shovel-ready projects in Mason County to apply for projects on the federal level to get those dollars. Where should we go first so we're not double-dipping and running lines across each other? The challenge is the BAT is essentially sitting and waiting for someone to take leadership within. So I'm listed as the chair of the BAT. Not my stakeholder, obviously, but actually very interested in it. But I'd love to work with Mark in the county to figure out how can we mobilize the BAT to make it a neutral entity to make sure Mason County is being served at its entirety? I'm also working with the BAT in Grace Harbor. And that's what the county decided to do, is keep the county at the table as a facilitator so that all projects are looked at equally within your districts, that you're not putting one over the other. So that when money is available, the county can look at it and say, we really want to support this one because if we do this, then we can do that. So again, I'm very much simplifying this. It's way harder than that. And then there's obviously there's stakeholders at play and things like that. But very much interested in seeing how the county can do that. The BAT is something I'm interested in, but I don't really know how to do that within my timeframe. And I'd love to work with the county to figure out what does that look like.
Can you tell me, is the EDC a part of that?
Absolutely. Yeah, actually, Kevin Schute has issued a letter of support from the EDC on behalf of Mason County BAT in a way to make it look like the BAT didn't actually issue it because the BAT is not really able to issue a letter at this time. So, but yeah, I emailed Kevin right away and said, what should we do?
Madam Chair, perhaps we could have that added as a Monday briefing item this next Monday so we can get on it sooner. If you would be able to maybe attend also so we could have further discussions on it. Are you any objection? Mark, can you make that?
I can. Thank you, Commissioner.
Anything else, Mark?
No, thank you, though.
All right, anybody else in the room? All right. Yeah, how about in the Zoom room? Do we have any electeds or department heads that would like to address the commission? All right, seeing none. We can move on to our public hearing. We do have a public hearing for to consider the countywide planning policies. Marissa? Good morning.
Mason County is in the middle of a comprehensive plan update. Part of that process is looking at our countywide planning policies in coordination with the city. Those policies were reviewed at two different meetings by county staff, state agencies, the city, and tribes. The draft contains revisions recommended by our consultants who is helping us to update the plan, SCJ Alliance. Those revisions were based on updates to the Growth Management Act, more concise and clear policy statements and inclusionary language. Those meetings took place back in June and July of two thousand and twenty-four. Our Planning Advisory Commission then reviewed and discussed those countywide planning policies at their August nineteenth meeting. They reviewed... The drafts they reviewed included comments from SCJ, staff, state, and tribes, but no decisions were made at that meeting. The document was then brought forward to another meeting in October of two thousand and twenty-four and was accompanied by many public comments, the majority of which were from a specific group. But that's specific, those comments from the specific group, Mason County Climate Justice, those were also comments that, from people that they reached out to as well. At that meeting, the PAC did not make any decisions. They had a lot of comments to review and felt like they needed more time to adequately address those. So we had a third meeting, which took place in November of two thousand and twenty-four. And the PAC went through each one of those comments within a matrix and made a decision to include the language as presented or with revisions or not to include at all. The PAC accomplished addressing each comment and voted to recommend approval of the countywide planning policies as revised. The PAC also agreed that the document should be a standalone document and that much of the information be deleted. It's a lot of background information. In the current version, there was a lot of background information with the intention of that information being included in a new introduction chapter as well as possibly other chapters as well. Staff also... Staff also submitted a sixty-day notice of intent to adopt to the Department of Commerce. We received only one comment within the packet that I submitted. That comment was included in how staff addressed that comment as well in the revised draft of the countywide planning policies. So the PAC and staff recommend that the B O C C approve the countywide planning policies as a standalone document and adopt the amendments to the countywide planning policies as shown in your attachment one. If you have any questions.
All right, do I have any questions for staff? Anyone in the audience have questions for staff? All right, seeing none. Anyone in the Zoom room have questions for staff? All right, seeing none. Thank you. All right, this is the time you set aside for public comment. If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand, state your name, where you're from, and and we'd love to hear from you. So do we have anyone in the room that would like to comment? Wow, we have an interactive group today. Anyone in the Zoom room like to comment on the countywide planning policies for our comp plan? Seeing none. Well, all right. We're going to move on to Commissioner deliberation.
I'll use my time to ask you a few questions. Can you look for one second? So I'm reading some of your comments based upon the previous staff response. I would suggest discourages in the finding of incompatible land uses. Could you explain to me, you highlighted... Are you comfortable with this? Do you have any personal issues with it that... I have some of the greatest respect. Actually, I already know that the commission does from the past that we have the greatest respect in you and appreciate your work and your due diligence and everything you do. And I seen that, and I just have to ask you, what is your thoughts on this yourself?
On the complete draft?
On the complete thing, and since you highlighted that.
I think the consultant did a very good job of looking at new legislation and what's mandated to be in our plan for this cycle. I also think the PAC did a very good job of addressing comments and...
I also think the PAC did a very good job of, um, addressing comments and, and addressing staff's concern as well. That's one thing I guess I didn't mention too. Staff also made recommendations regarding comments that were provided or language that SCJ provided as well. I, I would recommend the draft as it's presented.
Thank you.
That was gonna be my question. Any questions for staff?
As I, as I read through the, I just had one question there. So there's a call out in there for climate justice. What do you mean by that?
Well, um, so as most people know, the climate element is required this, this cycle in our plan. Our consultant was tasked with taking our emergency management plan and what's mandated through the state. And seeing where there is any, um, where there's any, um, disconnect and what, if there's additional areas that we need to address beyond what the emergency management plan addresses. We are, right now, we have a climate planning action team that's reviewing that emergency management plan as well as, has got, as well as guidance from the state. And climate justice, I know it can mean many different things to other people. But for Mason County, I think it's looking at all our areas where we have issues such as flooding, fires. Um, and making sure, um, that we are making smart decisions about, uh, land use decisions. Where our facilities and housing is directed. That we're looking at communities that may be, um, burdened or, um, have a higher burden. And looking at how we can support those communities.
I'm not sure I understand yet what, what you're referring to by that, but, uh, maybe I'll have a discussion with you a little later. We can go into more detail.
And we are, we are still, I mean, we've had our second meeting of our climate planning action team. So still, we still have several to go through. So there's gonna be a lot of information that comes out from those meetings too.
Thank you.
And Marissa, when you, when you say support those communities, um, you're referring to the general government services in terms of support, right? So like fire support, um, support with, with access to resources like power and water and all that, right? Okay. Thank you.
Discussion. One of the things that we've tried to do at the commission is make it clear that, uh, when it comes to this particular situation, because we all have concerns. And I think we share the same exact concern that you're sharing right now, uh, as, as does the auditor stuff. Uh, we've been very clear from the commission's standpoint that we're doing only what's required by law. And we want to be very careful when we're handling that. And I believe that they have up to this point, but I want to let you know, we share the exact same question that you do. So, uh, I believe at this point, it has been, we'll see in the future as things come before us for passing. And we'll have some deep conversations on it, I assure you. Yeah, I don't know if that helps you feel any better about it, but, oh, you know, it's just, no, it's a good question, Pat. We have the same issues.
We do. And, and to be clear, this is the policies. This is not the comp plan that we're, um, having the hearing on today. Correct. Okay. And I did listen to the last PAC meeting and, um, then Kell and I met to discuss it further. Appreciate you coming over and, and spending that, what was it, hour and a half or so? Discussing things. So appreciate your help and your, your guidance in that. It's nice to have SMEs and, and we have a lot of subject matter experts in this room. And in the Zoom room, and so I want to show, or let you know how much I appreciate you all. And your, your wealth of knowledge. All right, anything further?
Okay. Madam Chair, I move for approval of the countywide planning policies as a standalone document with the amendments as presented in attachment one.
All right, we do have a motion and a second for approval of the countywide planning policies as a standalone document with amendments as presented in attachment one. Any further discussion? All right, and a call for work. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Again, thank you, thank you, staff.
Is there an issue?
No.
Okay. We'll make sure we got it passed right. I saw you going back and forth back there.
I was like, oh, no. All right. Thank you very much. And thank you again to staff. You guys are, you guys are pretty amazing. Don't have to go to your head, but. All right. Now, we have no more public hearings. Let's move on to item number 11 calendars, or boards' calendars and reports. Commissioner Nenel, Commissioner Tarzwell, and then I'll follow.
Yes, after this, we have a finance committee meeting. I have a meeting with the North Mason School District regarding the levy, uh, levy meeting. I'm having lunch with the seniors, uh, north and south here in this next, uh, week to two weeks. Rotary meeting, North Mason Community Voice, uh, Porta Health meeting, Builders Forum, WAC ledge meeting, I'll be online.
There's not one.
Oh, then I will not be online. Are we having elected officials meet? It's still in my calendar again. Are we having one? And I think if not, we need to schedule one because that's a great time for PAC to get to know every elected official and talk to them. So.
What day did you have that scheduled for?
Quarterly. We try and set one up.
Yeah, I had, I actually have one in my calendar for some reason, so.
I believe because we're trying to set the one up for the first quarter.
Okay.
So we were putting a date out there.
I had February 3rd, 2:00 PM is what I had. Yep, February 3rd, 2:00 PM. So then, uh, after that, I have, uh, Porta Allen, uh, then the left law enforcement firefighters meeting. And, uh, I'll be speaking at, uh, some classes in North Mason School District.
All right, thank you.
At 1:00 I have a EMTA board meeting. This afternoon. Tomorrow I meet with the Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory. 9:00, then another MTA orientation tomorrow at 10:00. Oh, I have a discussion about Bremerton ILA. Exactly sure where I'm going for that one.
My office.
Can't, can't read my, uh, calendar. It's a little bit too packed. I'll be speaking to the Women's Republican Group tomorrow night. Thursday I have, uh, canvassing board training again. It seems like it's redundant. I just did that last week, so I'll have to check into that one. Then I have a tentative hold on, uh, AHSS and EPA slash PS. I couldn't rattle off what that acronym stands for, but it is, uh, it's about South Sound Health, the water. So then Friday, uh, just a Zoom meeting. That pretty much covers the rest of the week so far. Sprinkle in a little bit of physical therapy. We'll call it good.
When you start crying, that's when I want to know. And you're also gonna say that you have the MTA.
I am, so make it clear, I'll be at the MTA.
Okay. So coming up next, we have our Finance Committee meeting, Mason Transit, uh, Board Meeting, um, SWAC meeting, which is our Solid Waste Advisory, um, Committee Meeting. Um, my Turning Point Monthly Board Meeting. Legislative Steering Committee Meeting, uh, Roundtable. Which is so much fun because I, I love those because you get all these commissioners and council members in the same room. And we all discuss issues. So it's kind of fun. Some of the issues I'm glad I don't have. And then Thursday will be WAC LSC meeting. I've got two meetings going on at the same ti- time, Area Agency on Aging and PAC Mountain. I'll have to figure that one out. Going to the Roanoke Conference Friday, Saturday and coming home Sunday. On Friday before we leave, I have a Public Works Board Executive Committee meeting. Want to wish my brother a happy birthday on Monday. He's my middle brother. Don't tell anyone, but he's my favorite. Briefing on Monday. I'm considering going to the PAC meeting on Monday evening. Coffee with Susan Kirchhoff. We have our Board of Health on the, on Tuesday, the 28th. Did you announce that one? Possibly having lunch with Diane. And then a PAC Mountain Consortium meeting. And then I will be out of the office Thursday and Friday. On Saturday though, there's a Mason County Tourism Workshop at the Peord Oyster Bank. I will be going to that one because that just sounds amazing and fun, especially since it's at the oyster bank. And then we're back here for our briefings. Do have WAC Virtual on Monday, the 3rd, and then our regular commission meeting.
So, Madam Chair, I, I guess I should fill in next week. I will also be going to the PAC meeting Monday. Then I have, uh, another Board of Health meeting on Tuesday, next Tuesday. Then we have a Crab Board meeting, uh, Wednesday and then Thursday. They're pretty much all day. That's in Olympia, so I'll be out of the office.
And those are amazing. They provide so much information and you learn so much about what we can do with our road menus. So important. And that, don't be afraid to ask any questions because.
Crab, Crab Board is County Road, uh, I can't remember the acronym. It's gonna be a while before I catch up on all the acronyms, so.
County Road Administration Board.
Thank you. County Road part of God, but that's like, what's the rest of it?
Right, right. And also I, I do want to say that I have, I'm on call for jury duty. So if by any chance I do get picked for something, that trumps, so. Do your jury duty. Final site. All right, let me take off.
Madam Chair, I move for approval, or, I move for adjournment. I move for approval of adjournment.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second. We are adjourned.
I'm gonna call the, um, Porta Lee Mason County Finance Committee, um, to order. We are here representing the fourth quarter of, um, 2024, so wrapping up last year. If we can go around and introduce everybody, that would be awesome.
I'm Brittany Pearson and I work in the Treasurer's Office with Lisa.
I'm Steve Dunkle, County Auditor.
Randy Nuzzo, question?
Pat Tarzwell, Commissioner District Two.
And Sheriff Jess, Commissioner District.
I'm Lisa Fraser, Mason County Treasurer. And we have Mark in the corner over here and we have some visitors in the back, so welcome. Welcome, Commissioner Tarzwell as well. So I'm just gonna be, I don't have a ton of business today, but, um, I knew it was Commissioner Tarzwell's first Finance Committee meeting. So I felt it was important to meet in person today. A lot of times if we don't have business, sometimes we'll just issue the report and we'll meet again in the next quarter or as needed. So this, um, report again is for the fourth quarter of 2024. And we finished the year 2024 with our, um, cash balance, um, at $26.7 million. Our prior year was $26,497 and so we have an increase between 2023 and 2024 of $206,000. I did slightly change this report to give you a graph. I don't know if you like the graph or not, but, um, it kind of puts things in a little better perspective, I thought. So moving forward, I will use that, but if for some reason you need it to be, um, changed in a different format, you can always let me know that. I apologize for yous that have copies that they're in black and white. It was my intention that they printed in color. But.
It's a good thing I'm colorblind, Lisa.
Apparently I didn't, um, get that printed correctly, so. If you would like to look at my page, I would be happy to change that for you. It is in your packets in color.
There's the colored version, okay. It's too small to really see.
Right, it's pretty small. I'd just like to report on what our general fund reserve and contingency policy shows. And again, um, with our general operating, um, for 2023 expenditures of 44.9 million. Our policy balances at the 15, 20 and 25% are at 6.7, 8.9, 11.2. The difference between our cash and our policy balances are there. Less our reserves, um, gives us a 12, 9 and 7.5, um, excess cash available to the county. And then your reserve policies are listed just below. On page three, as of December 31st of 2024, we had cash and investments totaling 27384 million. And the breakdown is there. We had, um, 19 million in our checking, 67,000 just in our impressed accounts. We had, um, deposits in transit of 577, um, and, um, E-Rita, which is the real estate excise tax in transit as well, of 75,000. And our investments were at 250.3 million.
So what's the extra E and the A for, REIT?
It's Electronic Real Estate Excise Tax Affidavits. So E-Rita.
I got the REIT part.
Right? The breakdown of our investment portfolio is below. And you can see that, um, our market value and our gains and losses, should we have to sell any of that portfolio? But those would be at the end of the quarter. Our, um, benchmark pursuant to our investment, um, policy is based on the 90-day T-bill rate. Which as of December 31st was 4.34%. And we have no savings, um, accounts. The state pool rate is currently at 4.6%. That is the, um, local government investment, um,
Pool?
Pool, thank you very much, Brittany. And, um, our market rate, um, on our agencies and treasuries are at 1.80.
1.80, Lisa?
1, 1.80, yes, 1.8%.
Oh, see it there, thank you.
Okay. Um, there's just some historic information for the local government investment pool rates from 2020 through 2024. And then the historical Federal Reserve rates from 2021 through 2024 as well. We haven't seen a huge drop in our investment earnings rates. So, um, that's still looking really well. And as you can see, um, I've listed the investment interest collections for 2024 through the end of the year. We had budgeted 900,000 and we brought in 2.5 million. Our banking costs, um, are still minimal. Bank of New York Mellon, who we use for our custody agency for our agencies and treasuries. has increased our contract with them, so the fees are slightly higher there. And then we also keep a compensating balance with Unqua Bank in about approximately $8 million. That offsets our banking costs for the year. So as you can see, we pay nothing to Unqua Bank for our banking. The next page, page four, is just the county debt recap. And what we started out with a balance of $19.1 million. And then the payments that we've made to date, and our current balance is $16.8 million. Most of those payments are due in June and December of each year. All of the data for that report is in your package. So if you have any questions on that, you can let me know. On page five is just old business and new business. I don't have a lot of old business, perlilarata. There's no new update to the RAD for Shetland Road at this time. It's pretty much just kind of put to bed for the winter. We are still working on getting all their easements and so forth, but they'll start working on that again spring and early summer, so.
But the money and everything's in place?
We are, we will have to go back to the banks as soon as we get, they finish that project to get the loans and so forth, so. We don't have any financing set in stone at this point because it's just taken too long, so.
What was the total amount?
It's about $375,380, or $380,000, so. We are looking at bank loans for that. And there is a possibility of doing some internal funding for that if necessary.
And that's a question that I was wondering, because now we've always treated internal loans as a three- to five-year request or whatever. But I've always wondered if it's possible for us to do investments. We're one of the best riskers there are because we can't be K.
Yeah, so what you would have to do, as I understand it, is we'd have to do a five-year loan with a balloon payment and then refinance it for the next five years.
That's what's been missing. I knew there was a way. Thank you, Lisa. You're always so awesome with that.
We've never done financing that way internally. It is an option. I saw lots of questions on what that would look like, but that is a possibility if a bank loan is not the best way to go.
And that is how I handled it back in the port days. So that, I couldn't remember, that's the part that's missing. But with that, if we were to do it, we collect the interest, and it goes back into whatever fund. For example, if we're using money from the fund that Economic Development runs for new economic development, it goes back in with that interest for ourselves. But it'd be up to you because you've never brought something like that forward.
Well, it would be up to the commission that the finance committee would recommend, you know, bring a recommendation forward, so.
You're listening.
So, well, we have a plan. So at this point, that's just kind of still out there, working on that. I don't have any other financing that was been brought forward to me anyway to bring forward to you at this point in time. And so I didn't have any new business today either. But if there's anything for the good of the order, I would open it up to that.
Just to thank you, Lisa, to talk with you now for a long time, and you were talking about your graphs. Your stuff is so easy to read. I always appreciate it, and it's completely full. And for those that don't remember, we had times where we were getting next to nothing, and you were jumbling air to make it work. Because now I still remember it, and I still appreciate it.
Yeah, I still remember, too. Some rough times. And so some good and through some bad.
They were charging us to hold our money and to do our money.
Exactly.
Instead of us making $2 million. It was tough times.
So as a treasurer and a little on the conservative side, I love seeing that we have, you know, a really nice, healthy fund balance and policies and stuff in place that makes governing and investing and all of that with our monies healthy, so, anyway.
And everything you produce is so, it's so well-written and it's transparent.
Well, good, I'm glad. I mean, it's taken a lot of years to get here, I'm sure. But it's important that people can understand it, so, you know, where the data comes from especially and how it's put together, so. I want to try and keep it simple and straightforward, but also provide all the information that, you know, you feel is needed, so.
Everyone appreciates you.
You're welcome.
And your whole office.
Yes, my whole office. I could not do it without them, so.
They're pretty amazing.
All right. Unless there's any questions or any other business, yes.
I just want to bring up a sensitivity again that I think came up a couple commissioners' briefings ago. Not that we're going to do anything with it here, but I know that when we were looking at the 2025 budget and the implications or anticipated increase requirements for our reserve policy balance, I think we're looking at like $13.5 million for 2025. And then just keep that in mind against our projected year-end cash balance, right? We're kind of, we're starting to kind of crowd ourselves, and we just need to be sensitive to that.
Madam Chair, one of the things that you talked about is when we're looking over our numbers. I, my expectation is that it won't be $13, we've been doing this so long, but if we don't do something mid-year, it'll literally be $7 million. The problem that I have when looking at it is our unobligated funds is right around the $7 million. And if we lose that, then the next year, we're actually eating into the reserves.
Right.
That's a dangerous place to be.
So I just think, again, I'm just bringing it up just because I think we need to all be mindful of it. Keep it in front of us.
Yeah, that's what I think they're going to bring up at our next elected meeting as well. I think so that everybody's aware.
Yeah. We have a better, we'll have a better picture, obviously, in the first quarter when I'm reporting what the expenditures were for 2024 and what the contingency and reserve balance looked like. But again, just reporting for the end of 2024 based on a 2023 expenditures, you know, doesn't really show us a true picture today of where we are, so. All right?
Okay.
All right, well, I appreciate all your time. I'm going to call the meeting adjourned.
I move.
Thank you.
We adjourned.
What time is it?